Good afternoon, it is one oh two. And I'm waiting for the little record signal, there it is. It is one oh two and we'll call to order the June eighth, twenty twenty Public Safety Committee meeting. I'd like to, if we could, open this meeting with a brief moment of silence, both for the George Floyd family and all those that have been impacted from injustice through any means, certainly with a lot of folks in our city hurting. Just a quick moment of silence, please. Thank you, I appreciate it. Committee members, we are in truly an amazing time for our country and our city. The challenges before us are not new challenges, but they are things that I believe that we are all prepared and ready to stand up and to take on these challenges and the great opportunities that are before us. It's also time to have wise discernment and to listen to wise counsel as we consider these options, and that's a lot about what today is about. I have seen every one of us around this council stand in support of these calls for justice. And I know that this is not anything new for many of us. Today remains about listening. Reminded as a mediator by training that you can never come up with the right and create good options without listening and understanding where people are coming from and what's on the table. And so today, I'm encouraged by the presentation by Chief Hall and John Fortune as it relates to the Real Change Restore Trust and Build Relationships in Policing briefing of item B. And then for item C, to give our Public Safety Committee the opportunity to make general comments as it relates to what's going on now in our city and for our committee, have opportunities to ask questions of any available staff, and then to very, very clearly identify the types of policies and the recommendations that each one of us have. As we have been listening for the last several days, I'm reminded at each of the protests that I've been to, I've talked to a lot of different people, and the consistent message has been, we just want to be heard. And so this is our opportunity, not only to hear, but now to start translating some of what we've been hearing into action. And so my hope is by the end of this, committee will have a good list of action items, of steps, of things we can do to move this city forward as it relates to public safety and so many different areas that are impacted. This committee has been engaged in a number of reforms over the last couple of years. We've made great strides in establishing the Office of Police Oversight and the Citizen Police Review Board. We've created and expanded the care. We've opened up and given more access to complaint systems in our police department. And we've eliminated old warrants and unenforceable citations, created and had our teams trained in implicit bias and created an integrated Office of Public Safety among many, many other things. And I appreciate each one of your efforts in this, and I look forward to hearing more about what we can do. For housekeeping purposes, the first briefing, I sent a memo out in the last week, but the first briefing item, the update on the One Dallas Plan, will allow a lot thirty minutes, so be cognizant of our time. That doesn't mean we're not going to have a lot more discussion about this in the future, but just wanting to get some explanation and answers and the opportunity to ask a few questions. So time will be of the essence. But you can also reference back to that during your essentially seventeen minutes during item C for each committee member. Noncommittee members that are here, we appreciate that, once you'd engage. We have a limited amount of time on that, trying to keep things moving forward as best we can. With that, I will open first item A, the approval of the minutes, the March third minutes, and May eleventh, twenty twenty minutes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move to approve both.
Your motion, is there a second? I think I heard a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed unanimously. We will now move to item B. I believe John Fortune is listed as presenting.
Thank you, committee members. Actually, I'm going to ask TC, I think he's online. He wanted to make a few opening comments, and then I'll take it up from there.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members, as well as guests on the line. Can you hear me?
Anne.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to say, before John got into the depth of the Real Change, that I appreciate the City Council, particularly Councilmember Magoo, for calling this meeting to really hear a little bit more about One Dallas Real Change and look forward to the ongoing conversation and the additional things that may need to be discussed and reviewed with the council, along with the team and the chief and her staff. So again, John, why don't you take over from here and walk the council through the program? Thank you.
Thank you, TC. Committee members, I just wanted to make you aware that the presentation, that actual presentation that I'm about to go over is something that we just developed over the weekend and sent to you this morning. I want to ensure you know that there's no new information in this presentation from the memo that was presented to you with the packet on Friday evening. I just wanted to provide a tool for us to kind of more easily walk through the Real Change program. So with that, let's go right into the slide three, Miriam. Let's talk a little bit about the fact that we all, as we all know, that the recent events that have happened in our country have really brought international attention to the difficult relationships between law enforcement and communities of color. And as TC indicated, and it was per his direction, that the city is taking this as an opportunity to proactively address the historical and the present, these present day challenges. And what we're trying to do is align our intentions and resources to build a foundation of trust between these marginalized communities and law enforcement. And listening to and learning from our diverse community, we believe, is really the first step to help us move forward a union as One Dallas. So Project Real, One Dallas Real Change. This has been launched to provide a scalable action-based plan, which is aligned with Twenty First Century Policing. In just a few minutes, I'll go through the tenants of Twenty First Century Policing and give you an example of some of the things that we've done over the last year, year and a half, but also to provide you some foundational context for what we're planning to do and hoping to do as we move forward. But Real Change, first and foremost, aims to establish policing that is responsible. We want to ensure that we're fostering relationships that promote programs and initiatives and that protect and serve all members of our community. Secondly, we want to make sure it's equitable. We want to address the racial and anti-bias tendencies to eliminate barriers and focus on inequities and improving everyone's safety. We want it to be accountable, transparent about policing processes and practices to increase community trust. And finally, legitimate, ensure policies, procedures, and systems and decision-making have legitimacy to build that trust. And so those are the major tenants for Real and the Real Change, and I wanted to just set that context for the rest of our conversation. On the next slide, what you see here is kind of an overview of what we've done. Obviously, building trust and legitimacy. If you're not familiar with Twenty First Century Policing, it's one of the tenants of that program, and it's something that we have through our, the department has for some time now, been advocating a movement toward, it's been the basis for most of our decisions and plans that we've put in place as it relates to review from the KPMG study to the crime plans that the chief has provided, not only this past year, but in previous years as well. Under this tenant, we see that the department has already, as Deputy Mayor Portimacu and the Chair have indicated, we've supported the establishment and the creation of the Office of Community Police Oversight, as well as the revamp and kind of the restructuring of the Community Police Oversight Board. Police Department through its processes and through its planning feels like that is exactly where we need to be in order to help build that trust and legitimacy in the community. The chief has also instituted some time ago some ongoing community advisory board meetings. These are a group of residents and community stakeholders. We meet with the chief regularly to give her a sounding board for policies and procedures and feedback about things that are happening in the community. It is helpful and relevant to help the police department respond appropriately. The department has also began sharing officer-involved shooting information with the community. And this is one of the standards where I'm not saying we put a pin in this and claim victory. I think there's more that we want to do here, and it's going to be part of the discussion here in just a few minutes as it relates to some of the next actionable steps. In terms of policy and oversight, the next tenant under Twenty First Century Policing, we've initiated officer drug testing after deadly force incidents, and we've improved and overhauled the accessibility of the officer complaint process. We've reevaluated the adjustment and adjusted our practices for hiring officers and the qualifications for officers. And then in the next tenant, you'll see from, as it relates to social and technology, most of you I know are intimately aware of the StarLap program, the relaunch of the iWatch Dallas app, the increase in use of the body worn cameras, as well as the implementation of the Dallas Online Reporting Systems. These are all things that we've done with the tenant and premise of trying to promote new ways in which we can build the trust and use the technology to advance those principles of Twenty First Century Policing. In the next category, we talk about community policing and crime reduction. In this instance, I would just point you to some of the summer youth programs that Chief Hall has created, as well as the increase in the number of UNIDOS, Hispanic and Latino liaisons and engagements that we have implemented just this past year. I'll point you to the implementation of the Rite Care Team to proactively address behavioral health calls. And again, this is one of those that we know is, we just laid the foundation for. We have much more work to do in this area, and we have a plan to do so. We began the implementation of the KPMG staffing recommendations. It helps us rethink the way we deploy officers to make more efficient use and better allocation of our existing resources. And then finally, in this category, we talked about, I want to just highlight the addition of the full-time LTBTQ+ liaison, which is supported by the community, fair to again, provide that outreach for the community in that area. And so finally, I'll just point out something that the Chair already indicated, which is for training and education, the implicit bias training, and then the programs that are in place and that are ongoing, as well as the officer wellness and safety. There is a need, and we know, we recognize the tremendous stress that police officers are under on a daily basis. And we want to make sure that we're focusing our time and energy on their health and their wellness by mindfulness training and providing them superior support. And so those are some programs that we have underway currently in the department. Those are kind of what I would put in the category of what we've done. But I know we're all here to kind of talk about what's next. As the City Manager sent to you late last week, we've provided you some immediate actionable plans for continuing to build a community trust with our city. And so some of those immediate action steps, I would consider to be in the zero to ninety day timeframe. On June third, the chief, she's already done this, she changed a roll call training bulletin banning chokeholds. And that's been in place since two thousand four. She's now made that a general order. And so that, just going beyond just being a good training practice, a good practice to not train officers in the use of chokeholds, we now have a general order prohibiting that as well. On June fourth, as you're aware, the police department chief, she implemented the duty to intervene policy. And then by June twelfth, by this Friday, we plan to implement a warning before shooting policy. Again, these are two very important elements that come from community recommendations, as well as some of the best practices from national law enforcement policy organizations that make these one of, these two of eight tenants that are very important for building that community trust and legitimacy. On June thirtieth, we will have a monthly reporting mechanism for officer contact for traffic stops and citations. As you know, we report that, we record that annually now. And so what our intentions are is to develop a process, whether it's through the dashboard or some other mechanism, to have for the public to see on a monthly basis that type of information. We are going to create by June thirtieth, a dash cam or body cam release policy for incidents that are critical in nature. And so we want to be able to show the public what happened. We want to be able to give them the full insight as to what that particular issue was, whether it's a shooting, a police shooting, or officer-involved shooting, or anything else. The plan is to be able to provide a policy that everybody knows in advance so that when we get into these incidents or these incidents occur, we'll have a plan in place to provide a solution to the community. And then lastly, on this category, in terms of immediate action, the chief is going to review all of our use of force policies and kind of evident kind of the first three bullets that you see there, and make sure that we're doing everything we can to be consistent with the national standards that exist. And we also want to make sure that we get those published on our website for transparency. In the next category, what I would consider the short term, the next ninety to one hundred and twenty days, we're going to recommend expanding the Rite Care Program to include at least two additional behavioral health teams. The idea is to enhance and improve, increase the number of clinicians that we would have assigned to these teams so that we can continue to look for ways in which we can divert behavioral health calls to avoid taking someone to jail for behavioral health issues. They're not getting help in the jail, we know that, and we need to be able to have a team that's broad enough to cover the whole city to build off the successful programs we've had in the South Central Patrol Division. This would include developing some chronic consumer services for those individuals that will need some continuing and ongoing support through their issues, as well as some dedicated training for the entire police department so that as we're, as officers may encounter someone with a behavioral health issue, they'll be better equipped to know how to relate and handle those very dangerous and sometimes very difficult situations. By November twenty seventh, the chief is going to implement a robust early warning system that will assist the department and supervisors to identify those officers with three or more incidents that could be cause for concern, so we can proactively and preemptively address any specific training needs or reinforcement of standards, police standards, or expectations with those officers. We think this is one that's going to be very important for us. It's something that I think is, will provide an opportunity to really change the mindset for people. If we can get into their situations early enough, we can hopefully prevent any catastrophic situations down the road. And finally, we would talk about the long-term plans. By January of twenty twenty one, we would like to have implemented a program that's kind of something that would help build and enhance community relationships. The idea is to use the concepts of procedural justice to bring police officers and community members together so that they can sit down and start building relationships and building that trust and trying to restore that trust between the public and the police department. By May twenty first, we've talked about this previously, Liz Ann. Our prime plan for this year was to start the process of developing a cultural assessment of the department. And this is really going beyond just understanding what people think about the department. This is really about identifying strategies of how we can begin to change the culture of policing and the culture of how we relate to the community. So we believe this is one that has, this is an area for significant benefit to us and our community if we can get to the bottom of some of these very specific strategies that we want to develop in terms of our culture. And finally, on May twenty first of twenty twenty one, we would like to have completed a comprehensive review of all city, of all EPD general orders in conjunction with a review through the Community Police Oversight Board. And so I know I went fast, Deputy Mayor Portimac, I know you have some ideas of trying to keep this to a thirty minute window, and I will just stop at this point and just be available. I know Chief Hall's available, TC, myself, we're all available to answer questions. I want to turn the rest of this time back to you and the committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. We can open up to questions from the committee.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
All right. Thank you, TC, John, chief, for the presentation. I have several questions. First, I want to acknowledge that Mayor Johnson had signed President Obama's pledge. He had a town, President Obama had a town hall meeting last, I believe it was last Tuesday. And at the town hall, he challenged mayors all across the country to sign the pledge. The pledge requires interview police policy within sixty days and to come back with a report in ninety days. And I hope those who, you know, chief and other staff members will be available to have that discussion with him regarding some of those policies since he's made that pledge. That's number one. Number two, I believe on page seven, we talked about the liaison UNIDOS. Who are the, who is the liaison to the African-American community and engagement?
So, Councilwoman Thomas, this is Chief Hall. We don't have a specific African-American liaison. Jolie Robinson is the Community Engagement Director, and she is the outreach, as is multiple African-American sergeants that have different sectors, whether it is the boxing program, whether it is multiple paths, chess, and things like that. So there is no specific liaison for the black community, but our leader is an African-American female.
Well, let me ask you this. When we have incidents such as what happened with Mr. Floyd, and we need to talk to our black clergy, we need to talk to our black community organizations, our black attorneys, ororists, who is that person who has those conversations?
That those conversations come through me, but they're, Jolie Robinson is the liaison who reaches out, gets those individuals in the room, and those individuals ultimately sit down with me. They serve, I have a stakeholder meeting, and they all sit on my stakeholder meeting, and we just had a call on last week, Wednesday. So we have calls every month. We would normally have meetings every month, but due to Corona, we've been doing calls, and she's the one who reaches out to all of those individuals.
Well, I was just saying, suggest considering appointing someone for the African-American community, appoint a person that they can call directly. I know you personally accessible, but oftentimes, you know, you can't always be everywhere and be accessible to everybody at the same time. And so I would suggest you get that consideration on page nine. You know, I just got to be honest, because I really don't know any other way to be. You know, we can't do business as usual right now. The protests are not going to stop until we take some immediate action, until we actually, and I'm going to talk about this in the next portion, actually sit across from them and say, hey, what are you asking for? Those things that the council can approve, and we know what they're asking for. They're asking for change, not just with police policy, but they're asking change in terms of how we, how we allocate funds. And that's us. That's on us. And so we're going to have to make decisions that people are not going to be very happy with. I just got to be honest about it. Page nine, please. Can we get the presentation back up?
Miriam, can you bring the presentation back up on page nine? We're working on it.
Thank you. What's next? Let me stop and acknowledge the work that was done, the memo that came out Thursday, the policy changes. You know, I'm talking with a number of, I was at a couple of rallies. I've talked to people that are out protesting and demonstrating, and they acknowledge this is a good start, but it's not going to get us, you know, where we, where we really need to be. At the end of the day, we want to get the protesters out of the street. We want to make sure our issues and concerns are addressed and heard. And we want to be able to make sure that we're implementing so many of these things that are long, 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 long overdue. This timeline, I see there's already been one change. There's attempt to be, there's plans to make additional changes, we'll say the third and the fourth. Okay, so that's two days. We have potentially, we have the twelfth as planned, the thirtieth monthly reporting. So let me start right there. We said, again, monthly reporting, also contact that on all traffic stops. Where will this information be made available?
So we're trying to have it forward-facing with our dashboard, our new forward-facing dashboard that was just created. If we can put that alongside of the rest of the data in the police department, then it will be right, it would be captured there.
Okay, do we have a date when, and I know we looked at a draft of that new dashboard, do we have a date when that dashboard will be active?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
It should be active very, very soon. I'm hoping to have it active this week. If it's not active already, it should be this week.
Okay. On the next one, creating and implementing the body and dash cam policy to release, my picture's here, I can't read all of the incidents. What timeframe we looking at in terms of this information being released?
So when you say which information, what do you mean, which information?
Creating and implementing the body and dash cam policy to release, maybe I can move myself out of here. Where our picture is, is right over that center.
June thirtieth, June thirtieth, sir.
Right. But how long, and I guess this is a different question. How long are we saying that from the time that we have the body cam, the dash cam, in twenty-four, forty hours, how long before that information be released?
I apologize, sir, I didn't understand the question. Yes, we're looking at forty-eight hours, twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Actually, looking at forty-eight hours, because that gives us an opportunity to collect the video and actually compile it so that we can get it ready for the public. So forty-eight, some cities have seventy-two, and so we're looking at those, those timeframes. Forty-eight hours is our preference.
Okay. What's going to determine that? Because I know you said it's our preference. What's going to determine, you know, will we have a hard and fast time?
So, so right now, we're talking to legal, as well as the DA's office to kind of solidify that and what that actually looks like. So that's going to determine that, and then our opportunity to go out, grab the video, and capture all officers involved and all of the video in order to be able to release accurate information.
Okay. Do we currently have, you know, whenever, whenever, is it just kind of whenever the information is available, we release that, that data?
No, what we have right now is within five days. But what happens is, within forty-eight hours, there's a meeting with myself and the Oversight Board Monitor, and as well as the training staff and command staff. And SIU, we review all officer-involved shootings, use of force, and critical incidents, and then make various recommendations and decisions. And then we release that information to the public through our blog in five days. We do keep them updated as the situation unfolds. So when the shooting happens, we give them the brief details, and then we come back once we have that reviewed and put that information on our blog.
Okay.
Chairman Thomas, last question on round one, please.
Okay, thanks. This is a TC question. I'll come back for round two, but I'll be breathing. TC.
Yes, sir.
In preparation for pulling out the One Dallas Real Plan, was there any communication with the monthly police oversight board, the chair of the police oversight board?
Uh, no, there wasn't, Councilman. I've committed to working with them on areas specifically within their purview as we move forward.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chair, can I have ten second follow-up, and I'll be done. Ten seconds.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. TC, regarding that, do you plan to have a conversation with them regarding this and then provide us feedback from them as regarding this particular plan?
Uh, yes, I do, Councilman. I've actually spoken with the Chair, as well as the Monitor, and ensured them that as we began to, one, evolve the entirety of Real Change, that they will be involved and included, and where in fact, they've got an opportunity to participate, particularly around use of force and their review of those things juxtaposed to the police chiefs as well, that will have that conversation. It's my expectation that they will have a heavy part in our community outreach portion. It's my expectation that they will have a heavy part in our, uh, community outreach portion of this as we, uh, develop that, uh, procedural justice conversation, uh, with the entire community. I see them front and center, uh, in some cases even hosting and convening many of those meetings.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Get your lead.
Thank you, other questions?
Wilson?
Yes, Councilwoman Mendelson.
Thank you. Uh, my question is actually aligned with the memo that was, um, attached to the, um, agenda, not with this PowerPoint that we received today. So, um, my first item is actually about, um, what you have done. Your Roman numeral one is building trust and legitimacy. And to Councilwoman Thomas's point, who has been briefed on this? Who has given input on this? Or is it just you don't really put out there? And I don't think that actually builds trust and legitimacy.
Listen, Chief Hall, uh, Councilwoman, a lot of these, uh, things that you see have come out of meetings with various activists and through.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop you because you're, you're using qualified words, like a lot of the things you see. But who has, who has looked at this? Who has been briefed on it? Who has given input on what you put out the night before our public meeting?
I'm not sure that I understand your question. I support, I supply what has been done in the police department through the work of stakeholders, advisory groups, various activist groups, the things that have been, um, asked and have been worked on and done through that work through the city management.
So specifically, um, there's a number of items on here that I don't think have ever been briefed. So, uh, what's next on immediate warnings before shootings? Who's ever been briefed on that?
Councilwoman, those general order decisions are made within the police department. Those are under my purview to make, and so they don't require council decision. And so that's just the way it's set up, is that, um, I have full autonomy to institute general orders within the police department, so they don't require, uh, council approval.
Then I'm gonna go back under section, uh, Roman numeral three, also under what's been done under technology, C is body worn cameras. So we're taking credit for body worn cameras. We allocated, I think, $900,000 so that everybody, um, in uniform would have one, as well as SWAT and some of the other, um, specialty areas. But then on Friday, you said something that was very surprising to me, which is that nobody on the bridge had a body worn camera activated. And I'm wondering why we spent all this money and why you're taking credit for having body worn cameras when they're not being used?
So, so Councilwoman, uh, I would just like to correct you. I didn't say no one on the bridge had body worn cameras. I said all of our officers who were assigned to the protests did not have body worn cameras. And so we had to, uh, find out who was on the bridge, who had cameras, and then download that information from the cameras. And let me start by saying that the reason I do take credit, because when I came to the police department, we had 900 body worn cameras. It was a relationship and a partnership with myself and Axon, uh, sitting down to get, uh, up to 2,000 cameras. They gave us the next, uh, five or 600 body worn cameras at no expense moving forward, so that because we needed them. And so that was a relationship and a partnership, um, that, that in order for us to continue to test, uh, and, and make sure that that this was something that, that worked for us and it had what we needed to put in, uh, and, and make sure every officer had an opportunity to have it. And so that is where that partnership came from, uh, from, uh, my leadership in.
And I was gonna tell you that I don't think that there's any shortage of support for body worn cameras. I think everybody, as soon as you said you want them, there's no doubt that it would be funded. And if you need more, let us know. Um.
One minute, Ms. Mendelson.
Fine, I'm just gonna go through and ask all my questions and not leave time for them to be an answer, so at least they can be on the record. For doors, I'm wondering why this has not been implemented across the city. Um, for mental health, uh, we're taking credit for doing right care, but my question is how many right care teams are there? And how many calls have they answered? And how many mental health calls have there been where we didn't have a care team available? Moving on to, um, number five, for training and education. Um, I have a lot of questions about how long it will take to get implicit bias training for all of our officers and what that schedule looks like. If there's an end of course exam, or if it's a pass fail, if it's a certification. For the 360 stimulation, um, we have one actual, um, unit. And so again, how long does it take to actually train the whole force? How many have been trained? Is there an exam? Is there a certification? Um, for the warning shots, I have to tell you, there was a Supreme Court case just within the last two years. This is something that's allowed, and I think it needs to be looked at. Um, item four, under what's immediate, how we haven't in the last three years looked at our use of force policies, I don't understand. Um, long-term, I think there's a number of items.
Do remember, you have quite a bit of time on the next item, but you can also reference back some of these questions then during that time as well.
That's fine, thank you.
Uh, other questions from committee members on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Chief, uh, is, is, is Tanya on the call, the, uh, our monitor?
Let me confirm.
Definitely should be.
She is not on yet, Councilmember, if you could come back to her.
Okay, I'll come back to her. Um, uh, John Fortune, I wanted to ask, uh, I guess ordinance-wise, you, you know, I think one of the, the concerns that I've had and expressed with outside agencies is not that, uh, I don't, I don't, um, appreciate the help, but we are not able to, um, hold them accountable, um, with our oversight board or oversight policy. Um, from my understanding, um, and that's why I was hoping Tanya would be able to clear that up, that, uh, is something that we could have changed, um, through the ordinance of the oversight board to include, um, anyone who is enforcing law, uh, within our city. Is that accurate?
Councilmember, I, I would have to defer to someone in the legal department to give us some legal aspect or legal, um, interpretation of that. Um, I do know that, um, each agency who, um, is involved in enforcing has their own disciplinary process, it's independent of each other. I think what you're referring to is having some rules of engagement for joint operations, um, whether it's, uh, protest enforcement or any other type of joint activity that will put everybody on the same, same rules. And so, um, I'm not in a position to be able to answer that question. I don't know what legal authority we would have to discipline an officer from another agency. Um, that doesn't mean we maybe not be able to look at the case. Maybe that's what Ms. McClary is referring to, um, based on the cooperation with that other agency, but I don't know that we could provide any disciplinary, um, actions against any other officers.
Okay, then with that said, if any of these ordinance or ordinances are put in place, um, including, um, an implementation of mandatory body cams, if we are relying on our emergency response with outside agencies that we don't have the ability to, um, discipline or oversee, um, in a formal fashion, why, why, why does that make sense?
Um, Councilmember, I'm not saying it doesn't make sense. I'm just saying to you, there's not a mechanism that I'm aware of that allows for us to discipline and, and evaluate the actions of another officer from a disciplinary standpoint.
But is there a way for us to, uh, to, to, uh, require them, if they're going to be on our streets, to, uh, adhere to? I mean, if they are gonna be on our streets, they have to have a body cam, um, and dash cam just as our officers do?
Most agencies that operate, um, let's take, um, some state agency that's here, they have state jurisdiction to operate here whether we ask them to be here or not. It's about the coordination that we have. And so, again, I'm not sure what the city of Dallas can do to mandate a policy for another law enforcement agency that has a legal basis for operating within our jurisdiction, whether that's DISD, DAR, police, or any other police agency.
But I, I.
I can't, I'm not saying they can't, I'm just looking into that question. Something we would have to pursue.
I'm sorry, this is Chief Hall. We can look at our mutual, because we have mutual aid agreements, and we can look at that to see if that's an option.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I also wanted to ask, um, about the, uh, the need for us to have, um, response. Um, well, I guess I can actually save that question for the next briefing. Um, I, I, I appreciate the, uh, proactive measures being taken by, um, TC and, uh, Chief Hall. I know that this is, uh, just, just the beginning of changes, uh, to come. Uh, I think it was things that could be done, um, that didn't require council action, and, um, it provided a lot of, um, uh, I guess it eased a lot of the concerns and, and, uh, feedback that we're getting from the community, and I would love to, uh, to continue on, um, the discussion. Um, now I believe, uh, going past just policy changing, uh, changes, but also, um, discussing, uh, on, on moving forward, uh, some different budgetary options that, uh, I've spoken with different council members about, and, uh, TC as well.
Thank you, Ms. President. Can you wrap this up, please?
Yeah, I, I wanna say that, that, you know, to, to be clear, um, when you say defunding, it doesn't mean to take, uh, it doesn't have to mean to take officers away. This isn't, that have to be necessary about, uh, personnel, but I think that there's gonna be some, um, need for some really productive conversations with all stakeholders, and, uh, hopefully Chief Hall, um, is gonna be willing to, to, um, to talk about what those changes will look like and what, uh, is gonna be the most effective ways for us to, um, kind of reimagine public safety. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, other committee members.
Mr. Leader?
Yes, sir, that's Councilmember Blewett.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Friday night, I talked a little bit about the evolution of protests, and I also talked a little bit about the evolution of the police responses. And, and I like where this all went. Chief Hall, I think I asked you Friday, and I'm not sure if I got a definitive answer on an after-action. I didn't want to report from the evening, but I did wanna know, when are we gonna have more of a report? For like the last 10 days, that kind of shows that evolution that we discussed? Is there a timeline? I don't know if you, if you answered that.
No, sir, I didn't give you a timeline at this time. But we, uh, what I did state is that an after-action usually is, is done after the entirety of the situation. This was ongoing, like, we're still doing protests even up to today. And so, uh, our resources to pull together all of the information and put it together and dissect it and go through it and give you an accurate report is done after the incident is actually cleared and done with it. And so that allows us to do that. So we're looking outward to see when are we done with protests, um, so that we can move forward to an after-action plan. And right now, I don't have a timeline. We have protests scheduled through Tuesday, um, that we know of. And so, uh, we are, we're so thankful to our community for the peaceful protests. There's been thousands of individuals out in the street, um, and it's been very peaceful. And, and so we're thankful for that, and we're, you know, ready to get to the work that needs to be done, sitting at the table. And so that's what, uh, that's where our endpoint is, is when the protests actually end, because most of our resources that are dedicated to actually pulling this information, putting it together, and getting and dissecting it is assigned to this protest.
Yeah, Chief, I, I, I'll kind of, it's hard for anybody to put a timeline on when the protests are gonna end or what the end result's gonna be. And I'm not sure that, that we can really wait for an undefined time to have more knowledge of this evolution I keep talking about. If I could ask maybe, maybe we could put a thesis to kind of show more than just an evening of, um, because I have seen the difference from the protesters, and I've seen the difference from the police response, and I think that's an important narrative. And I don't think we can wait for the, all the activity to be over. We, we don't know when that would be, a week, a month? We don't know what could happen. So I would like to see that change. I'd like to send the message to the public that we've listened to, that we are making changes, and they need to know that. And so I, I would like to have something a little quicker than just the end of all the activity. Um, so if you chew on that and get back to us, let me, let me know, or let all of us know what, what you think about that, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, to go to, on the screen that's up right now, page nine, where you talk about monthly reporting of officer contact, and that's something that goes hand in hand with an after-action report, which is the idea of transparency and telling the public what's really going on. What, what in more, do we know what that reporting is gonna look like? Is it a dashboard? Is it, you know, what's a memo? What, what is that gonna look like?
So, so we're trying to have it forward-facing like our, uh, crime report and, and data that's, uh, coming out. This, uh, Mr. Fortune said it should be done this week. So having that forward-facing so that they can see, uh, the demographics, uh, where we're stopping, who we're stopping, and what we're stopping those individuals for, and that we're coming in contact. So a forward-facing, uh, dashboard with, with the information attached.
So dashboard. Um, because this goes hand in hand with, like I said, the after-action report and giving information to our, our residents, our citizens, the people who are on the streets. I've, I've personally seen a lot of misinformation, and so I think the more accurate information we get out there, the better, good or bad. And I'm very supportive of transparently getting that data out there. I hope it's a very intuitive, easy-to-access, comprehensive dashboard that people can see what's really going on. I think that's a great step to tell people that we're listening and, um, what we're doing. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Madrano.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chair. Um, Chief, and John, I guess everybody, um, where are we with? Um, I know that several of us mentioned trying to get the, um, charges dropped for the Sunday curfew. Uh, I know that there were several journalists and photographers that were, um, I don't know if they're given a ticket or rested or whatever happened to them. Uh, where are we with trying to get those dropped, just like we did with, um, the folks on the bridge?
So, so those went right over from, uh, the night that they were detained, and I've reached out to the DA, I'm awaiting his, a response from him. So that's a conversation that, that, uh, I'm waiting on with him. He has to get all of them and, and then move forward, but I have reached out to him in that process.
Okay, uh, I think other councilmembers asked some of the questions I was gonna ask, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, other questions from committee members?
Uh, I'm, I do have a comment, Chair.
Chairman Arnold.
All right, thank you so very much. I, I, I appreciate so much the energy, and I do wanna, I, I'm just a couple of things, because I want us to move forward on Mr., uh, Councilmember Blewett's note, uh, in terms of getting information back. And I can just only speak as a professional, and it perhaps would help. But I think as we move forward in this whole endeavor, as we tailor our meetings and require staff to come, we, I think we need to be a little bit more supportive, because if we're looking for reports and, and factual and up-to-date information, it's gonna help us to help them get the time that they need to work with staff. We have to understand, we're pulling staff, uh, among a number of committees, and we're pulling, pulling the police department, and, and, and I'm not making any excuses. We just talk the real, real deal. So I think we need to be mindful of how we're pulling them away from what we really want them to do in terms of reporting. Uh, and, and as Chief said, we're continuing every day with protests. That is what it is, but I think some of it, if you give us a, them a chance to pull together some data, uh, particularly I can cite, uh, we're talking about the bridge, um, uh, Sunday night, whatever. We do have to be mindful, as, as she just stated, if it's going to DA, there's a process, and you have to understand, some folks, uh, have warrants and some, they, they got some issues. So everybody's not squeaking clean, and so they may have been looking for somebody that just happened to showed up, showing up. So we have to give the, I think the, the system an opportunity to work, and that's my position. Uh, also, as we talk about this particular, uh, real plan, I did wanna share particularly, uh, Ms. Carol Mendelson's, uh, comments, because I'm getting a number of, of texts. I need to go on the record very clearly that, uh, we are working, I know in District Four with, uh, South Central, uh, in, in particular, and we have relationships, we're gonna continue to be in relationships. We've got to, everybody is not trusting, everybody is, has on blue. We know that, but I can tell you, we are working on a day-to-day basis. And so it kind of, it upsets some of our members who are listening that we, we, we have this statement as if there's no, no relationship building in the process. I, I'm gonna speak for my district. So I did wanna mention that, but I also. But I also want to say, as we talk about restoring trust and building relationships, what my community is saying on a regular basis, and you can go out to Zoo Creek and talk about the drug houses that they've had to deal with, go on Kellogg Street and they're dealing with murders and drugs and prostitutes up in 10th Street in Historic District, walking the streets. Let's go down here off of Leadbetter, excuse me, Illinois, where the owner of the funeral home has to run the prostitutes off who having sex, open sex in daytime right outside the funeral home. We've got murders on Bonneview, shootings, domestic violence, men beating women, men who also beating children and endangering their lives. So we got quite a bit. And so we need a relationship. And that's part of what I deal with. And I have to be accountable to those individuals. So I did want to mention that and also caution everyone who's listening, because I know everyone is being torn from different directions. My primary responsibility is the District Four primarily. And so I have to be careful when we get caught up. You have a number of outsiders who've been bought in for the main purpose of, of, of making waves. And as I look even at some of the emails that I have, I have people talking to me about what we need to do in Dallas. And they're from Frisco and they're other places. So I'm focused on Dallas, District Four in particular. And that's where I'm, I'm, I was elected to do that in District Four. And I'm going to do the best I can to address those concerns and speak specifically to the day-to-day building of relationships and the concerns that we may have with this, with the blue. And, and I'm going to tell you, it's not perfect, but I'm willing to work it until we get where we need to be. So I did want to put that on the record as we move forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there other questions from committee members?
I have one more for this presentation.
I couldn't hear, is that Basil Blewett?
I just have one more question for this presentation, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please briefly.
Yes, I was just curious if you, Chief Hall, if you have some recommendations that you can provide as well? I'm sure you collaborated with TC, but I know that TC put out this memo with things that, that could be implemented immediately. I, I just would like to, to see if you could provide the committee with some recommendations straight from you on what you believe could also be added to this.
So, real quick, Councilman, before I let the chief answer, I just want to be clear. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, and Chief will probably say it, but all of these recommendations came from the chief. And my challenge to her, as we were thinking through this, was tell me what it is that we need to be doing as a police department that is under and directly, that you might be able to go and do immediately. That needs to be done, should have been done long before you arrived here. And she went and worked with her team, as well as John Fortune, and they came back with these items. The only influence and conversation I have and really am more concerned with, for me at least, my interactions has been how that community engagement process and the layers of it are as a relation to this conversation with the community. And so I'll have probably some framing and work with them on that, because I'm experienced in doing that, what I believe is a right and effective way. But these recommendations are from the chief, and she probably has several more. I just want to share that. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I, the rest are Jermaine and the next. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. I just have one. It's on page nine, so you can keep it up. I know we'll be on recess, it's our last meeting before we go on recess and we won't be back until August. So my question is, Chief, TC, looking at the review, all use of force policies, is there possible to speed that timeline up from August 28th, potentially to maybe the middle of August after we get back?
So this is Chief Hall. We wanted to give ourselves time to go through with our Oversight Board as well. And I just want to put it on the record that we're not just looking at our use of force policies. Upon me coming to this police department, each chief was charged with looking at policies in their respective areas. And here, we looked at use of force policies. And if you look at the president's eight for eight, we were seven of the eight before this incident even happened. So we've been looking at our policies. Now we're going through to see if our policies that were placed in, 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 put in place are in line with still what our community is asking for. So that is what the, this review, not initial view, but another review alongside of our Oversight Board. Because we put them in place based on law enforcement. So now we're looking at the community to make sure that what we have in Dallas's use of force policies is commensurate with what our community is actually looking for as well. So we're asking for that time so we can make sure that each person gets an opportunity to actually look at it and we can look at it collectively and make the necessary adjustments. If you, if, we're just asking for that, correct?
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. With not hearing any other questions, we'll go ahead and go to, Mendelson, yes.
So I guess my last comment is just this, that I'm concerned that our role on City Council and specifically in this committee is about policy and oversight. And I really feel like a lot of this should have come before us, before it was released. And while I appreciate that you have heard from people and from groups independently of that, they were not elected by the city, by the residents of the city to give that input. They were selected by you or whomever else. And that's actually our role. And so I just don't think that this should have been released. We're not even done with the protests. We haven't even looked at the data. You're telling us on Friday, you haven't even looked at that all of the, all of the, the information that's been available to you. And we need to do this in a very thoughtful way. These kinds of changes have big consequences. And we need to make sure our people are safe and that we make the changes that are smart so that we're building the kind of community we all want to live in. So those are my concerns. And that's all I'm going to say on that. Thank you.
So thank you, Councilwoman Mendelson. I'll also add to Chairman Thomas's point as well. Yes, recess is coming up, but I, I would, depending upon how the rest of this briefing goes and certainly the other issues, I could see us potentially having a special meeting before the end of the month to continue to address some of these items. So I'll certainly take feedback from the committee on that issue as well. With that, we will go to item C. For purposes, again, of, of housekeeping, this is, this is up to you, committee members, on how we lead this part of the process. I want to give everybody an opportunity for an opening statement. They have opportunities to ask questions of any staff. You can follow up on the line of question you had before and then a closing, if you like. So a total of 17 minutes. We'll be tracking the clock and I'll give you time heads up as we go through that. But with that, we will open this up for your discussion and/or questions specifically regarding the, the, what Councilwoman Mendelson was just talking about, question, Oversight of Police and Partner Agencies' Response to Protest in the City of Dallas and the recommendations for specific policy reviews and changes moving forward. If you're ready, Councilmember Arnold, we could start with Vice Chair Arnold.
Thank you. This is what I need for the record before I start, Chair. I need to understand, if you could just give me the names of these partner agencies' response so that I know, I'm taking some notes. I need to know who's telling, who's giving this input. That's, according to what's posted, it says the Public Committee is questioning this question and Oversight of Police and Partner Agencies' Response to Protest. So who are you, who are you speaking to? Is it about partner agency?
So it's, it's based on the discussion from Friday. There were several other agencies mis- mentioned, both DPS as well as the Texas National Guard and other entities, the county and folks we partner with. If you had questions for those folks, we're going to open that up and try to get the right people here to answer. I didn't receive personally any questions from committee members on those items. But if they are available, we certainly want you to have those questions or at least get your questions on the record if that's what you need.
Well, I just need to get clarification of who the partner agencies are. Because once again, I want us to be very clear and intentional as we collect information. Who is putting information before us and holding, trying to hold our feet to the fire? And who's trying to, who's trying to impact or influence our policy? Whose ear do we have? And, and I just want to make sure that they are here in Dallas or that, that, that they have been sanctioned on a national level or what level that is authentic if we're going to talk about policy. And, and the constituents are number one, but they are not identified here. It says partner agencies. And that's what I want to make sure of. Because as I move forward, particularly with our 365 Safe in District Four, I want to make sure if there's some other agencies out there we can partner with, I'll do that. So thank you. So if you don't have anything else, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move on to the next person. I'll come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, or who's next committee member?
I'll go, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Chairman Thomas.
This is a moment like no other since the 1960s. We have people using the slogan Black Lives Matter who would have been ashamed to say it a year ago. The outrage to the murder of George Floyd has been justified. Now we must make changes to police policy that is long overdue. This moment requires us to be bold and to be courageous. We must meet the demands of the protesters head-on. We must sit down at the table and hear their specific concerns. We must act on their demands. We must meet the challenge and put our money where our mouth is when we say Black Lives Matter. We must look at non-traditional strategies for policing such as utilizing trained medical and mental health professionals to respond to mental, mental health calls and many other strategies that we have not used before in the City of Dallas. It requires that type of moment. Question. Joe.
Sir.
I believe I sent you, I know I sent you a article and I don't know if I sent you a document as well, if not, I meant to send you a draft of a document. Are you familiar with other cities' strategies? And I know defund, defund the police, you know, these are good talking points, whatever the case may be. But are you familiar with some of these strategies that are being suggested by many other cities and other organizations that are focused on, and have a history of Black Lives Matter? Other organizations that have been focused on anti-police brutality and reform, police reform strategies?
Sir, I appreciate you sending me the article over the weekend. You did not send me a separate document, you sent me the article. And, you know, I've been looking at what other cities have been doing for the last few days. I've been, it's kind of been on a lot of news coverage about it. But beyond what I've seen or heard in the news, about debate and discussion as it relates to what varying groups mean by defund or disinvest, we have not done an in-depth study or analysis as to what specific programs or policies were changed in other cities. That is something that we will be doing as we move forward, just to kind of form more background and just understanding and awareness. But at this point, I don't have an in-depth knowledge about specific programs or changes in other cities.
Were you familiar with the concept of reimagining public safety? Is it something that you've heard of in the past? And if so, some examples that have been given when we talk about reimagining public safety?
Yes, Councilmember, I have heard of the term before. And, you know, those are, those are the, the type of things that we keep in mind when we develop programs like Right Care. When we look at a better way, more effective way to deal with behavioral health calls, those are also the basis and premise for a lot of discussions that Deputy Mayor Pro Tim mentioned in one of our programs this last year that was supported by the Public Safety Committee, which was to go and address old warrants and outstanding warrants that are very aged and don't have any purpose other than to provide another barrier to somebody to get out of their circumstances. And so we've had those discussions and we're looking forward to additional ideas and concepts of how we reimagine how we provide law enforcement. That's been the basis and premise for a majority of the KPMG recommendations in terms of just how we interact with people and, and respond to priority calls and shift our, our priorities to those crisis calls as opposed to spending tons of resources on, you know, lower priority type calls. And those are the, you know, the impetus behind doors and some of the other programs that we develop.
Is it possible that where, where with Right Care, we do have, you know, officers who actually go out along with medical personnel? Is there a possibility where we could have medical personnel, trained medical or mental health personnel who would go out and respond initially? And if we need backup from Dallas police, that we could look at doing that?
Sir, I think everything is on the table in that regard. Obviously, our primary interest is safety for people and we want to make sure that the situation is safe. The program that we put in place and the one that we hope to expand includes a triage-type component in the Community Dispatch Center, the Police Dispatch Center, so that there's actually a commission in the center who can help assess what the appropriate response would be for that particular call. So I do think that having more social workers, more clinicians involved in those responses is very important. Will I, do I personally see a situation where we can remove police officers entirely from every situation? I think that's very hard to know based on the policies we have right now and what we see in terms of need. Sometimes it does require a police officer because it's a dangerous situation.
What type of intervention, community intervention? You know, we have, you know, programs where we have neighborhood leaders to go through training and they can basically be eyes and ears for, for, for the police department in neighborhoods. I think, you know, one, as a result of what's happened in the past, we, we want to reestablish trust. We just are, you know, and, and, and I think this is going to move into a Chief Hall-type of question. The listening session was a great idea, but I, I think a lot of damage has been done to undo a lot of, of that work. Chief Hall, what, what do we can, what is it we can do? What is it you can do? What is it that can be done to reestablish and, and, and build on some of the trust that may have been initially, may have been built initially with the listening sessions?
I think that we go back to the table. I've actually had multiple conversations with some of the individuals participating in the protest to have those courageous conversations, to bring people back to the table and let them know that the listening ear and the response that they've had since the day we walked in and, and, and committed to these changes are still there and that we are willing to, to hear and, and move forward to make the necessary changes in the police department. So I think that's the start.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm going to stop there. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman Thomas. Other committee members?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I just want to say that I am very inspired by momentum that the movement has created. I, six years ago, went to my first Black Lives Matter protest after Mike Brown. And it was, it was something that I will never forget, being one of the only non-black people there protesting. And to see what, where we are now, six years later, and the support for the movement and the acknowledgement and willingness to listen and understand is something that I honestly wasn't sure I would ever see in my lifetime. So I think that it's, it's, it's really incredible to have the opportunity to serve at a time like this. And I'm, I'm hopeful to see that we're going to capitalize on that understanding and momentum that exists. The, one of the things that I would like to explore, I have spoken with TC about this in the past on a very, on a very thirty thousand foot level, is the multiple agencies that we have um on our streets. Um, including a um, the student resource officers for the DISD Police Department. Um, the uh, I guess, agreement that we have uh with DART and see if there is an opportunity for to um streamline that. The reason that I say that, I have been looking in different cities' models. One of the um turning points in crime reduction in New York City post nine eleven was um the colla, the um collection of the agencies that were put in silos for what we have uh now. Um, I think that that would help as reform and policy is implemented um for us to be able to uh see consistency. I also believe that um if there was a division um for student resource officers instead of its its own entity, um, that's another way that we could explore um starting with the younger generation on establishing trust and that community policing um goal that I think we all would like to see. Um, that is specific uh to just some, some uh overall. Um, but I do believe that we have a lot to consider with um protests. Um, I have some recommendations that I wanted to just get on the record. Um, and then I guess hear uh from either TC or um Chief Hall. But instead of going one by one and getting the questions, I'm just going to go ahead and and lay them out. Um, I believe that we should act quickly in creating policy on response um to our peaceful protesters to include um policy to protect the press. I think that we need to be very clear and articulate how DPD will protect members of the press during protests and ensure um the protection of exercising the First Amendment's uh right. Articulate how DPD is going to protect the press um and essential workers also during city curfews. As Mayor Pro Tim mentioned earlier, um, we not only had members of the press here uh that were approached uh to be, to have the curfew enforced, but also um were shot with uh non-lethal weapons and were for the tear gas uh deployment, uh deployment. And uh I think that that's pretty unacceptable and we should have a very clear um clearly lined out on how DPD is going to uh know um and how our city is going to move forward on on allowing for the press to be protected. Um, I think that I would like to see us prohibit the use of covert surveillance um as long as there is peaceful, uh, as long as protests are peaceful, the use of helicopters, license plate tracking, cell phones, I mean cellphone surveillances, et cetera. Um, I think that there is um invasive strategies that are used and I don't believe that we should be going those routes until um these protests have crossed the line to not be peaceful. Um, I think that, that I know that we can't control necessarily, uh, or y'all are going to get back to me on the legalities of what um purview we have on controlling um other outside agencies. But I believe that something we could easily implement um immediately would be uh on the police identification and transparency piece. It would require that name badges and identification be visible on all DPD officers, no matter what uh gear. Um, and that includes partner agencies that would be out there. Um, not to, not only to exclude those we've mentioned, but also DART police as well. Um, commit publicly identifying partner agencies involved in responding to violent protests. Uh, require active body cams for all. We've already talked through that. Uh, make record of all police accused of using excessive force. That there has been um a lot of talks in the past several years about some type of registry. I know that's going to uh require for the most effective measures for it to be done um with other municipalities and uh hopefully statewide implementation. Um, but for now, we can definitely start um a database and um a a platform for the public to be able to uh go to um see if there is a concern um or if there happens with officers that they are uh possibly experiencing some with themselves. Uh, make records. No, uh, reject any new hire into DPD who has a record of complaints from other forces, forces and agencies. Um, I've, I've heard from many people, including um Tanya, um, about um that is not enforced and how it's a much larger thing, like I said, than just our city. And if we have some bad apples uh who leave an agency, they um don't have a whole lot of stopgaps to, for them to go to another jurisdiction and get a job. Um. I'd like to see us um invest in de-escalation training to be done on a more frequent basis. I think that um, I believe what was said was six hours every two years. Um, if I'm not mistaken, and I I I think that's a little bit uh crazy. So in addition to implicit bias, um, train, I believe the de-escalation tactic training should be uh done much more frequently to um, to get with anything that has changed. Um, I'd like to um acknowledge the fact that we have a very contentious president in office right now and we have a presidential election coming up in November. And um I will, I think it's safe to say that we're probably going to see protests. Uh, um, maybe not necessarily all the way through then, but they will be there um when he's, when it's election time, especially depending on what that is. I want to make sure that we have um a comprehensive plan on providing and ensuring safe elections and prepare DPD officers on how to respond to peaceful demonstrations specifically at election sites to not infringe on um protesters' rights, not only protest but to vote. Ensure that DPD will not enforce in uh any then or existing government curfews against Dallas sites during uh time that uh polls are open. And um, I would like to see us implement some aggressive policy that's going to address uh going forward with protests. I'd like to see us prohibit the use of force um during protests, rubber bullets, billy clubs, flash bombs, um, tear gas, except in most extreme circumstances. Uh, when I say most extreme circumstances, those would be what would be considered, um, I guess, a threat. Um, I want to just preface that when I say that uh I don't want these used, it's because we've seen that they've been used in appropriate, they've been used in appropriately because they've been given as a means and at their fingertips and law enforcement officers have not been properly trained on what those times look like. In addition to, these military-style weapons um are not what our tax dollars should be uh spent on. If uh, in my short time in office over the past year, we have seen three emergency declarations be declared in this state and we have seen that there is mutual aid that is provided and outside law enforcement agencies that are sent to our city, all of which are equipped with the military-grade equipment that um that I am speaking of. So even in those ex- uh extremely extreme circumstances, um, that should not be, that should not fall on the municipality's job. I think it's a waste of our tax dollars and I don't think that it is uh um necessary uh to be used as a first means in response. Um, I would like for us to look at what uh arresting peaceful protesters are. Of course, that would be with the uh the training and come up with some sort of policy around um arresting of peaceful protesters um specifically to address a situation like occurred on the bridge. Um, you know, I I participated in a march yesterday through South Dallas and we have hundreds of people. And I, you know, I I talked with my wife and said, if, if, if I had made a turn down Park Row or South Boulevard and I wasn't supposed to go down there, it, would the people a quarter of a mile behind me, no? No, the, the answer is no. So we need to have much more of um an open mind and understanding to what these demonstrations are and prohibit the arrest of peaceful protesters who are just exercising their right. We need to prohibit the use of partner agencies, including DART, um unless in uh extreme circumstances have arisen. Um, if we do not have the ability to um punish or provide consequences to these agencies, then we need to do everything that we can to keep them off of our streets unless we figure out a way that we can hold them accountable. Uh, we need to eliminate the use of all of the military equipment and weaponry uh as a response, again, until extreme circumstances. Eliminate the use of certain military equipment and weaponry altogether in DPD, including a vote that, yes, hindsight is twenty twenty. Uh, I believe that it was uh something that I I ended up voting on to support only because of the justification being that the funding source came from some federal grade dollars and it wasn't out of our general budget. Um, but beyond us spending the money on it, I think that we need to really evaluate what need um these types of equipment such as tanks, uh like two of them that were voted on unanimously by this council and approved uh not too long ago, why we have a need for them to be at our fingertips at all times for a municipal uh police force that's meant to serve and protect. Um, with that, I will turn it over and and uh allow the rest of my time for a response from TC and uh or Chief Hall. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman, uh, go ahead, Chief.
I was going to say you unpacked a, a, a lot on us. And so I don't have a response at this time other than that everything that you've given us, we are, we're taking and we're going to review and sit down and and go through it item by item and and come back to you. Uh, you and I have monthly meetings and so uh we'll be able to talk through that and then come back and bring this back to the public safety and or the full council once we are able to look at each one of these items, vet them and see what uh, what we're able to do in these and what, what our, what our ability to do in each one of these categories is. And I think that will be fair for, for us to come back to you.
Thank you very much, Chief. TC, did you have something you wanted to add?
Those were going to be my uh same words is that you did uh say quite a bit. Uh, and some of those things in some cases particularly are related to other organizations. Uh, we'll have to go and either have some conversation or better understand, but the chief summed it up. We'll get back to you uh based on their review and then share with the committee as well as yourself as we move forward. Thank you. Great suggestion.
Thank you very much. And I, um, whenever you do give me some more guidance, I guess, from the legal perspective of the outside agencies, I would like to know that if there isn't anything that we could do, um, some suggestions on uh from Chief on how our uh deployment command can um utilize them. Uh, because I do believe that we still have the uh, the say on how they are deployed, or at least we did in, in the summer. So I know that the mutual agreements are all, they all vary, but I would like to see that if that is the case uh that they were brought um without us asking them, if that was the case, that we are able to utilize them in the right way and not have them on our front lines, but yet um put our officers, who hopefully will have these added trainings and um support for these situations, to be those who uh respond literally from the front line. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for your response.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, who's next?
I'm, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Just quickly, I, I, I want to just be very brief because we're going to follow up in weeks to come and thank once again the uh tag team of 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 Mr. Brocknax and Chief Hall and Mr. Fortune and all the staff member. We want to continue to thank them for their uh commitment to, to being able to respond to us as we request as council. But I want to make sure, since we're talking real and some of it I will, um, I'm going to hold my comments. But I know for sure, we've got to be very pointed and intentional as we move forward in bringing people to the table to affect, uh, to frame policy that affect us in the city of Dallas as we move forward for quality of life and and closing that gap between these divisions in our city uh and the relationships that we're trying to, we don't want to compete witnessing wedges in some communities and uh with the public safety partners because we know we have to have a city of the public safety structure. I mean, otherwise you'd have anarchy and there's no uh civil, civilized nation can exist without public safety. And that's part of the social, what we call social contract theory. The people gave up some of their rights to uh governing bodies such as ourselves so that we could make decisions as a whole. Because man alone, all these different communities could never come together on just how their individual uh plans would work. So that's why you have to have public safety. You must have a concerted effort with, with public safety. But let me tell you what continues to keep me up at night. You know, I know the struggle and I know, you know, it's been painful over the years to see the abuse to African-American men in particular and African-Americans and, you know, some of the more egregious acts. So I don't, I, I really don't need to be schooled on that. It's painful. You know, I, I'm still, you know, every day I'm looking at visions. But my point here is this, as we move forward, be mindful of who we are allowing to sit at the table. It's good to have all these voices, true enough. We, we all know here, we are, have allowed some of these folks to come to this table to tell us what to do with our policies and they have criminal records that they haven't uh, uh, dealt with. And so, and they have behaviors that continue to perpetuate poison here in the city of Dallas as they uh pretend to be about uh freedom of speech and fairness. So we've got to call it what it is. You know, we have people here that'll be, uh, one person in particular and they're trying to tell us what to do with policy. But if you too have abused, uh, have participated in domestic violence and acts that are criminal, we shouldn't allow them to be at the table telling us what to do uh with, with, with police officers. It doesn't make sense. So let's call it what it is. Let's be intentional. Let's be pointed. And let's be about taking care of public safety here in the city of Dallas. And yes, it's not going to be very tasteful, uh, some of it, but we have to do what is civil. We have to be humane and we have to be realistic. And so I am concerned too, as we talk about uh, uh, the weapons that we use and whatever. And it bothers me, of course, that we're in Texas and so you have a governor who supports Second Amendment. But and and you have to also understand some of these folks on the street have better equipment than some of our police officers. So we have to, we have to be mindful of what we're saying and I don't mind being helped. Uh, I don't know everything, but I can tell you I'm willing to do what I have to do to protect the people in this city, be responsive to District Four and be realistic about where we're going as a city and how we treat each other in this city as we fight for quality of life. So I just want to put that on the record and thank all the council members for doing what they do to help us. But let's be real when we have a conversation and have folks who have a real concern about quality of life in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Arnold. Um, I, I'm going to have to step away just for a minute, but I would like to have a couple uh moments at this moment. If, um, Chief Hall, could I just ask a couple of questions of you? Are you, um, when will we get um a sort of a formal after-action report broken down of the, the actions that have taken place over the last few days with all the protests? What, what, what will that look like and when will we get that?
Okay, as um, Councilmember, Chairman, just uh, as I said before, um, usually what happens is we get, we get through the actual incident itself, which here is multiple days. And after that, we have to allow ourselves to get all of that information and then present it to you. So usually anywhere from two weeks to three days um after. But what we will do is, is what we're doing right now is we're collecting as much information as we can as we go through this and we will try to get you a brief overview. But what our concern is, is documenting information that is not accurate. And so it's, we, we, the balance is, do you want it timely or do you want it accurate? Because information changes based on other video and or information that comes in. And so we don't want to put something out there and declare And so we don't want to put something out there and declare one thing and then just a week later to get another video that um, dispels anything that we put out in the beginning. And that is why it's important for us to gather all of the information before we can give you any fin- finite uh, information regarding all of the circumstances. Because there's so much information coming in from multiple locations. And to give and to give you information that is inaccurate would would do the, not only the department an injustice, but the community as a whole. Look as if we're being disingenuous, and that is what we're trying not to do.
Thank you, Chief. And I I understand that. I would say that the circumstances here are are somewhat different. And at least my request would be that we treat um, each day as a separate incident, at least that has occurred so far. And try to work to get that information with specificity. I mean, I, part of my frustration Friday night was I'm s- I I understand what your answers were, that you didn't have the information and still don't have a lot of it. But that, I mean, that would drive me crazy if I was in your shoes. I'd assume the priority and the the need that you you feel yourself is to figure out the details of each and every one of these moves. There's a a lot of us that have some real concerns. And again, in in this role as from this body, we have additional responsibility to ask these questions and to find out what happened and to hold people accountable to the extent we can um, in our authority. And so we wanna we wanna do that. And it's really hard to do that job when we can't get the answers or it's pieced together from a bunch of different either social media posts or other things that um, just cause a lot more concerns. Um, all all of us are getting information from all sorts of different sources. And the information I want most of all is what comes from you and um, has the most accuracy and legitimacy that's there. And I just don't feel like we're getting that at the timely enough and in a way that we can act, have action items on it enough. So please um, continue to get us information on that and help us to answer some of these questions. It's, you know, everybody's watching and um, we're we're going to be held accountable for the, what we do now and what we have done. And so um, that's what I wanna to encourage as much as we possibly can. I am
Chair.
Yeah.
Just one quick point to you what you just stated. I want you to know too, and all of you, that I am beginning to get information. And I would like to have some, of course, a little more validity to it, but I, for example, the last couple of days, I've talked to people who involved in the in the uh, uh, bridge. And so one person in particular is telling me, ma'am, we had no idea. We we were told one thing. And then all of a sudden, the orders changed to go across the bridge and we just started walking and following. That wasn't what I signed up for. But they just walk walking because they believed that the truth was told and they had been lied to. So I wanted to be able to get out there and and I say get out there, but I'm getting information coming in here. I'm not going out much uh, in those large crowds. But I want to let you know that the, I'm just getting some of this information. So I know it's difficult for the police, but you want to make sure that the truth is told because you are dealing with people who will give the, will lie. I'm just gonna tell you, some are gonna be truthful and some folks out there just lying just to kind of exacerbate the situation. But I believe this individual is telling me the truth. And I know she's a little bit afraid because she didn't want to be threatened or intimidated. But I can, I think I believe her when she says that they were told one thing and all of a sudden they were told, let's go across the bridge. So let's, let's work with this chief and and I'm gonna keep working as well as an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Uh, it's and it's the information is coming from our our own police officers as well, trying to figure out what was happening, when was happening, when decisions were made and that kind of thing. So it's trying to get to the bottom of this for everybody. Um, all right, let me just do this. There's a couple of things that I want to mention specifically. Um, as far as future actions to take place. Um, one I asked, I asked some questions about this Friday and we got part of the answer, but I do believe it's important for us to find a mechanism. Uh, maybe it's through our auditor's office, but for a third party to really review and look at um, proactive interventions and what we're currently doing to ensure that, I mean, I I believe it's a responsibility of all of us to root out whatever um, racism, bias, um, you know, what preferences that we need to through behavior that in some cases our city in the past has overlooked, whether it's intentional or unintentional or through passive acceptance, none of this is acceptable. And so we've got to the one thing I want to be able to tell our community is we have done everything in our power to root out any and every potential uh, wrongdoer in our police department and in, you know, the rest of the city for that matter. And so I wanna, I wanna take that on. Um, I'm I am, I heard some questions earlier about it. I am frustrated that we don't have I mean, even after asking some questions, we don't have real clear use of force policies. So we do need to look at those. I'm perfectly supportive of getting community engagement, that part of it, and trying to determine the best way to keep our community safe and our officer safe um, and review um, our, all of our use of force policies. I want to, as we just spoke about, have a enhanced process around after action reports and looking at that. The best way we can prohibit something negative happening in the future is to look at what has happened and how we dealt with it and correct the mistakes that we've made in the past. Um, similarly, I've heard lots of talk and I think this is an area that I've heard nothing but agreement on all points of this. And I so to me, it rises to one of the highest areas of of opportunity is additional training and de-escalation and specifically conflict resolution. Um, I've seen proposals that involve community mediation programs. This is an area that I'm passionate about, that I teach in, that I love. And I think there's, there's ways to um, use the skills of conflict resolution to help our our, all, all, everybody involved in this situation. And I think the more that we can include that in our high schools and our, even our middle schools. I know there are peer mediation programs out there, but to have specific um, de-escalation training. You know, all of our kids, a big portion of our kids are dealing with trauma each and every day. And they're often not equipped with the tools to do do so. So we, we combine that with another area where our law enforcement and community can benefit from the same type of training, same type of policies and create a whole culture of of dispute resolution, conflict resolution. I I do think we need to continue to take a look at our uh, Office of Police Oversight, Citizen Police Review Board and see how that's working and find areas that it can be improved um, and let it work. Um, so there's, I think there's some opportunities there to continue to focus on that space. Um, I've been advocating for a long time and will continue. You know, right care is one step of this. Other departments have mental health units within their police department. There's a lot of different ways that we could address mental health, I think would help our communities a number of ways and invest in that way. And to this point, you know, as we start to hear more and more people talk about defunding public safety. Um, I I'm I'm not in that camp and I, I believe that so much of what we have done to address some of these issues, you know, still fall under public safety, but it's just because that's where it breaks down in the budget. We're doing um, some steps that are, that are hugely helpful. And I think that's another area. As we've created the Office of Integrated Public Safety, I think that we can continue to to shift some resources in that way and and to make um, some productive steps with that office as well. You know, we had the, the Mayor's Task Force and other, even the chief's violent crime plan. Um, that I've been somewhat critical of and remain so as I think that we need more specificity. I don't have a, a level of comfort that, you know, the the department. When we say that, that everybody even knows what it means, that we're moving in the same direction on some of these things. And so, but we do know we need lights and cameras and lighten up certain areas. And those are things that can make huge differences and huge impacts very quickly um, that increase the public safety. But also, I mean, that's, those are things that are gonna be likely within the public safety budget. And I I don't want people thinking, you know, getting confused about what we're trying to do with that. It's helping, serving the community and keeping people safe. Um, I do believe there's other steps we've started. Some of us have started and we were looking even before COVID hit to try to bring a briefing and do a tour of our jail and look at um, some of the bail reform options that are out there that I think are hugely important and that we can we can make progress on relatively quickly as long as we're all working together. And I think this is the type of thing that that gets all of us on the same page to work on these things that we have shared goals in. If we immediately run to the the fringes and edges of some of this, it makes it harder, I think, to make a lot of progress. And so um, I'm, I'm encouraged by these particular areas of opportunities. I look forward to, to pushing as much as we can in these spaces to make the changes because at the end of the day, um, we do have a problem in Dallas. And this is a time for uh, redemption and we can do so through some specific policies and things that that make a difference. Chief Hall a- and TC, I I still, I still have lots more questions that I will ask um, i- in the future and and follow up on as to what has happened over the last few days. I have some um, you know, it's, it's hard because I never liked the Monday morning quarterback type deal, but I I think it's stuff that we have to address so that it doesn't happen moving forward. And um, there are genuine concerns relating to, to the impact it's having in our community and in our police department. So I will, I will stop at this point and um, I will, i- if if you don't mind, uh, Vice Chairman Ar- Woman Arnold, if you would take over the meeting just for a minute. I'll be back as soon as I can, but I have to step away for just a minute.
All right. So as we leave now, are there any other questions? For any of the members? Yep, a member, member members. Okay, and M- Mendelson and then Bluit, thank you.
As well as Councilwoman.
And I'm sorry, and can you share with me how long I have to speak?
On this round, I believe we have about three minutes.
I'm sorry, Judge. We actually
This is her opening. This is her opening. I'm sorry, thank you.
So is that five minutes?
Seventeen minutes.
Seventeen minutes. Seventeen, okay, that's a long time. Thank you. Um, so I've already given a statement on Friday and I don't feel like anybody needs to hear that again. Um, but I do want to just highlight this. Excuse me?
Excuse me, uh, Councilmember Mendelson. Uh, we hear something in the backdrop. We're trying to allow the council member to speak. Am I in error? Please correct me if I am. Do we have seventeen minutes per council member? Is that the statement that was made earlier?
That's correct.
Ma'am, this round you have seventeen minutes.
All right, thank you. So would you all please mute your mic so that Member Mendelson can speak? Thank you.
Thank you. So really, I've already given a statement. I'm not gonna go back over that. Um, but what I do want to say is that every single council member, um, I know I have spoken with about the poverty and discrimination in the city way before all of this, um, before all the protests. And I feel like as a council, we are very focused on these issues and um, have been um, addressing them. And this is just accelerating it and I'm glad. Um, I do want to commend the chief on um, immediately implementing the the duty to intervene policy. I think that's already been in place in terms of the honor and ethics that we ask from our police officers. But to have that as part of um, your general orders, I think is important and I'm glad you did that. Also, um, banning on chokeholds, even though this hasn't been taught for a long time. I can't even imagine that this wasn't already banned, but so thank you for making sure that was very explicit. I think there's a real value in going back over what's been done, like a recognition for the community to understand these are things that have been put in place. The problem is that many of them are just a toe in the water. They haven't been fully implemented. And that's what my um, my biggest concern and frustration frankly is. So when we talk about right care, a program I one hundred percent support and um, it needs to be expanded greatly. I am just rolling off of a board of one of the largest mental health service agencies in town. I'm, I think mental health is um, completely under addressed in our society. And like many things, we have left them to the police to deal with. And they're unpredictable. And they need extra and special training. So my question with right care for you, Chief, please, is how many right care teams do you have? Where can they service? How many calls have they been out on, let's say, in the, in twenty twenty or in the last year, however you want to break it down? And how many calls did we have for mental health service that they could not go on because of the limited resource?
Okay, I I don't have all of the data in front of me for that, but I can tell you, we have uh, one right care team in South Central. Uh, there was a presentation made to public safety to expand uh, to two additional teams, one in the north and then a, a central or a rolling uh, right care team. And right now, uh, that is, if, correct me if I'm wrong, John, we're waiting for funding for that uh, in this fiscal fiscal year, but that is uh, where we are as it relates to teams. As it relates to the numbers of how many people, how many calls we've answered in twenty twenty. I don't have that in front of me. I can get you that as soon as possible.
Chief, Chief, I can tell you that we we respond to an average of fifteen hundred mental health calls a month. Um, and that is um, roughly the average that we saw in twenty nineteen. I don't have the twenty twenty data in front of me. Uh, but I can tell you that that was, that represents a pretty large number of police resources that absent a right care team. And that's really the reason for the expansion is to try to manage the, that call load in a way that produces some results to eliminate it at some point, or at least reduce it at some point.
So how many calls would a right care team answer in a month? In a, in a regular month?
So they were, they responded to about a hundred and eighty-four of those calls. And that was just because now the the six, the fifteen hundred was citywide. And bear in mind that the pilot project that um, and that's what we've been into up until this point is a pilot project that was funded just for South Central Patrol Division. And so they respond to an average of a hundred and eighty-four calls per and um, that, that is the experience we saw in South Central.
So what we're seeing is about twelve percent of the calls from mental health services are answered by a right care team. And so what I'm saying is, we're not necessarily deploying the appropriate resource for the actual need. And when some of my colleagues use terminology um, about reimagining, defunding, blah, blah, we can call whatever we want. I think what you're hearing from council is we want to make sure things like right care are funded so that we do deploy the resources appropriate to the call. That said, I want the people who deploy, whether it's right care or any other officer, to also be fully trained, all the way up to the chief. I want to know, we're, we're claiming we've done, we've implemented de-escalation training, but clearly we have not trained the whole force. How, what percentage of the force today has been trained in de-escalation?
Yeah, the entire force has been trained in de-escalation. Anyone who's came through the academy got de-escalation training in the academy and they get it every other year. So that's for every officer.
But you said you had not.
Uh, I am the chief and so uh, I'm not required to go through de-escalation training. I've actually reviewed it. Um, and it, you know, read and everything else, but I am not required. I think I'm good because I'm actually uh, the one making sure that the training is given.
So you're saying every single officer at DPD has gone through de-escalation training within the past two years?
Yes, I'm saying if they, if they're, of course, on their core cycle, they get a de-escalation training, time, distance, cover. Yes.
Okay. So another item that you had on there is about the three sixty simulation. How many officers have gone through, what percentage have gone through that training? And what's the timeline to get everybody trained?
So the, the new recruits go through it. There are different units that utilize it and go through it for training. So I would have to get you the numbers on actually training on the S- on the, on the uh, simulator mach- machine.
If you had to make a guess on what percentage of the force has done it, what guess would you make? And I will not hold you to it.
I'd, I, I am not comfortable putting out an estimate, uh, because I don't want it to be held against me.
Okay, I just told them I'm not gonna hold you against it. Okay, um, implicit bias training. What percentage of the force would you say has completed that training?
I would say a small percentage. We rolled it out about a year and a half ago. There's some train, the trainers in the classroom sizes are about twenty-five. So maybe three hundred, four hundred officers may, maybe have been trained in, in in deep, in uh, device. And I may, that may, that may be uh, plus or minus.
So what I would say is that um, instead of having a discussion about defunding the police department, training is an area where I hope we will see an increase in the budget. And actually this past year, we decreased training, if I'm not correct, let's see. The academy training and in-service, three million dollars less than last year. So I hope that when y'all are working on the budget, you will consider that. When we're talking about the police basketball programs and chess, is that all under a police community outreach? We spend one point seven million dollars on that a year. Is that what that calls?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it right that you're, you're conducting three thousand community meetings a year? Is that right?
Yes, if not more. Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's remarkable and I commend you for that. I'm, I'm going to go back to this Twenty First Century policing. It was released so many years ago. I saw on your short-term plan that there is an, I'm sorry, is it short-term? It may have been longer term to go through. But I just want to make sure I'm correct in understanding what this says. Are you saying that to date, nobody has already looked through what are the policies and procedures at DPD versus the recommendation of this presidential task force that hasn't happened yet?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we have done that. And that's why when you look at the eight for eight, that, that seven of the eight, we are in compliance with, we've done that. Now we're going back through in line with community stakeholders, a lot of asks from community and making sure that our policies are in line with what is also being asked for. We've gone through the initial review, now we're reviewing with community asks in mind, in line with Twenty First Century policing.
So I guess my question is this, is if it has been gone through, how come we hadn't already done something about chokeholds and, and the duty to intervene policy? At the point that that review was done and, and you came up with seven of the eight tenants being, being implemented, why weren't those two done?
Because in our policies, we have, we, we're able to give, the statement was a fail, if you have a failure to act or failure to take proper action. So those things for us were in line with that. So understanding that the community is asking for a duty, a specific duty to intervene. It's, it was clear for us in law enforcement and oftentimes that's our language, but the community is requesting. And we say for it to be absolutely clear and black and white, then we've implemented a duty to intervene. But for us, it, it existed in other areas.
So you feel like most of the people on the force already felt that they had that duty? Is that true?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And then same thing for the chokeholds, if we haven't been teaching it since two thousand and four, frankly, with as many retirements as we've had, do you feel like, is this something that has been used or has not been used?
It has not been used, but we want it to be absolutely clear, that it was documented.
Okay, well, I appreciate that clarity and I'm, and I'm glad to know that, I'm thrilled to know that really. The other things that I wanted to talk about are the things that I think are policy issues that need to be looked at and addressed. One is the demographics interactions monthly, so that report that you're saying you have annually. We need to be looking every month at how are the interactions with the police being looked at in terms of demographics? Are we, are we over arresting women? Are we under arresting, you know, like, like what is it? So that we can understand what's happening and maybe why and address it, whether that's addressing it police-oriented or other ways. The de-escalation training obviously to continue and to really understand the level of training, you know, you're saying it's four hours once every two years. Does it need to be more? Does it need, is that the right training? Does it need to be more in-depth? The strategy for how we're addressing mental health and addiction services. We need to have a very serious conversation with the county. These are not the roles of the police department. And the county, which by the way, has funding, dedicated funding that is supposed to be addressing these areas, has not. And so while they may be a partner with us on the very limited programs we have with Right Care, we're going to need to have a completely different focus with the county who's made a lot of calls about what we should be doing with public safety to actually partner with us to provide the mental health and addiction services that are needed so that they're not a police interaction. Would you agree on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good. Legislatively, I think we also need to look at what we're doing. You have been reporting, and in fact, it's, I believe in, in the, in the, in the briefing materials about how many days people that you arrest for violent crimes are in jail. And they are shockingly low. And I think we're going to need to, again, have a conversation with the county about our efforts to keep our people safe by removing people who can't maintain civility. And letting them out in less than ten days, which I think was the largest number of any of that group, is just unacceptable. So expanding Right Care, how we do background checks on our new recruits, I think is very important and needs to make, need to make sure it's very robust. I think there's needs.
Just want to give a two-minute warning.
Thank you about body cam, cameras and when they're turned on and off. And want to go back to internal affairs process. I think the investigations are happening in a timely manner. But it's very clear those investigations stall out when they get to the command staff and they sit on the desk for a year or longer. And I think that's actually meant to punish the officer so that they're in limbo. But we have to be able to clear those and make sure that officers who have done things that are inappropriate are actually reprimanded or removed as appropriate. And the ones that haven't and someone's just mad at them, we get those cleared also. So those are things that I think are my top policy items. And I think I've made it in my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendelson, and thank you, Vice Chairman Arnold. Who's committee members wishing to speak?
Blue was on deck, I'm not sure if I was first or second up.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bluit.
Mr. Chair, Chief Hall, Ms. Mendelson touched on something that I was going to bring up, but I'm going to go a little deeper into it, and that's the idea of de-escalation. And initially, you've talked about it before, you've talked about it again today. And initially I supported you and your position as a chief. But I've had the opportunity, and I consider it a good opportunity, to see firsthand how you interact with the public. And while you are a chief, I do see you rolling up your sleeves and, and getting pretty close and personal with, with our citizens. And I would like to ask that you yourself go through some, some more training on this as well, simply by nature of how you approach this role. Is that something that you'd consider doing for us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Because like I said, I, I've seen you up close and personal and you're, you're, you're very approachable and on the street kind of person, and so I think that'd be good. You also touched on the after-action report, Mr. McGee talked about that. And I brought it up on Friday, I brought it up again another time, that I'm in an awkward position because I have a lot of constituents who ask me questions about what's been going on over the last week or so. And I've been pretty candid talking about the evolution of the protesters. You know, and granted, there are a number of protesters that have been peaceful the whole time. But there have been a handful that were not back on Friday and Saturday. And then it seems like all of the protesters have, have gotten the message that their message is much clearer when they peacefully protest. And I've been very quiet, specifically on police action, because I've been waiting for the police to tell me how they've evolved. I see that you told Mr. McGee two weeks to thirty days is a typical response on an after-action report. This does put me in an awkward position because I either have to not respond to my constituents with what the police action is today versus what it was, or I have to speculate. And I don't like that. I need to have better information to be able to tell my constituents how police responses have, have changed over the last week or ten days. Can we speed this up?
So, so what we're, what we've agreed to do is look at each day and try and give you a synopsis of that as much as we can without being held to an absolute, only because we're constantly getting information in on a, day after day about something that happened two or three days ago. So we're going to grab some statistics, events and break them down each day so we can show the evolution of what happened from one day to the next. But understanding that if other information comes in, it may change what you read on that day.
Yeah, Chief, I think that's great. I'm not trying, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's only about what actually happened versus, versus what we have in, in, in that moment.
Yeah, that'd be helpful to me. I'm not looking for comprehensive, exact, I, I have a narrative in my mind of how this has evolved. I'd just like to have more help from you so that I can be more clear with my constituents when I tell them, this is what the police are doing today and this is why. So yeah, not, not completely forensically done, but just broad-based, broad-based and details that I can push forward. So I like that, that's good. A lot of my colleagues have brought up other policy issues and concern, I, I consider this an ongoing conversation. It's really hard for me to get ahead of the conversation on specific policies because I'm going to want to hear a lot more. So I'm not going to eat up all of my seventeen minutes talking about my ten-point plan. I, I really want to hear ideas from you, why changes are in effect, why they're needed, why they're not needed. So I'll be responsive to that, but my main three points, one, you've already addressed on de-escalation for you. Two, on the after-action report, and then earlier on a different briefing, I talked about transparency. I really think beyond the after-action report is, I really am a believer in transparently telling the public every point of contact between our officers and our residents, just so that misinformation doesn't get the chance to become perceived fact. I think we're seeing that on the bridge, we're seeing a lot of misinformation. We need to be doing a better job on that. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, unless Chief wants to answer anything that I just touched on? Are you good?
Yes, sir. I, I do want to just, just, I do just want to, to just put on the record that I appreciate you noticing that there was an evolution. And that was that our tactics started out what they are and have been for many, many years, very peaceful. And as the crowd evolved and the dynamics changed, our tactics changed. And so now, right now, our tactics are back to where they were the entire time, where we handle protests in this city every single day. And so we do need to make sure that that's documented and that you have that. And so we'll work to get that out as soon as possible.
Yeah, Chief, I appreciate that. Like I said, I, hey, look, even I, as, as a politician, you know, I was at a distance on Saturday night. I got closer to it on Tuesday. I've been to protests now, I've met protesters and I've seen it with my own eyes, how, how they how they've changed. And I'm sure you've seen it too. So I just think it's a good story to get out there, what we're doing, to tell them that we've noticed what their protests really are and that it is no longer a threat to us and we're all working for the same thing. We want Dallas to be a better city. And, and that story needs to get out there. So thank you for all of that. And, and Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I'll sort of yield back my time.
Thank you, Councilmember Bluit. Is Chairman Thomas, are you up?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Couple of things I wanted to emphasize. And I know colleagues, especially those of you who call you newbie, we're not on the council when we approve the Office of Community Police Oversight Board and the Office of Police Oversight. That is a tool that is available to show and to build trust with the community. Some of you may have received the email, I hosted a, a webinar, virtual panel discussion about the Officer Police Oversight with our monitor Tanya, our chair, Jason Robo, the chair of the coalition, Changa Higgins, and a very outspoken activist for a long time, Olika Green. That was because many people are not aware that we don't have a review board anymore. We have an actual Community Police Oversight Board. And I wanted to make sure that that is known and understood. I, I suggested to the chair, and I know we're at the, you know, we're dealing with tough times right now, for that we have a full briefing for this committee on the Officer Police Oversight by our monitor. So she can share with us how this board, I mean, how, I'm sorry, how the office is set up and the chair of the Oversight Board can talk about the role of the board and how the board can re-establish that trust with the community. Do we have a city attorney online? Casey, so?
I believe that Casey Burgess or Jennifer Huggard.
I'm, I'm here, Councilmember.
Yeah, because I need to ask you this question. There was some discussion, there is discussion amongst those who are, you know, leading protests about the Officer Police Oversight and its functioning independently. Is there any state law, anything that would prevent the council from voting on a resolution? Or, or, not a resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance that would allow the Officer Police Oversight to function independently?
We would have to look at that, and, and I'm not sure what you mean in terms of function independently. Could you, could you give me a little bit more detail on that?
When I say function independently, they would be able to have some autonomy, more autonomy than they have according to the current ordinance.
Well, we can certainly look at proposed changes and make changes to the ordinance that the council desires. And so we would have to look and see what types of things you want to change. And then we can, you know, we can certainly explore that, but you could, you could make changes to, to give them additional authority. So we would just have to reveal what that is.
And is there anything that prevents the monitor, because that was some discussion, well, the monitor from, from reporting as opposed to, to city staff reporting to the Officer Police, Community Police Oversight Board?
I'm sorry, you said reporting what?
To the board as opposed to reporting to the city manager or being within the office of the city manager.
We would have to look at that, we would have to look into that and see, the way it was set up is that they were reporting to the city manager. But we can certainly explore that person, the, the oversight person reporting to the board.
Okay. One of the reasons I'm asking these questions is because this is some of the concerns that have been brought to the table by some of the protesters also. At the time of negotiating, you know, we were negotiating, we agreed that we would come back to the table and we would look at amending the ordinance or making whatever changes were necessary. So I want to ask you those questions. If you can begin looking into that, if you can update me on that, I would appreciate it.
I certainly will.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have bad connection? Committee members, are you able to hear me at this time?
I can hear you.
All right. So were there any other committee members that need to make a, a statement? All right, any non-committee members wishing to make a statement? All right, if not, I, I think Chair has looked at them, probably spoken on it. We have briefing by memorandum. We have briefing by memorandum. Do we have?
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
It's gay. So I had a couple of questions.
All right. Thank you. I just couldn't, I couldn't see you.
Yeah, thanks. Can you see me now? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not, but this is not your opportunity for non-committee members, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, right. Thank you. I mean, and I've been, I've been, I've been listening as much as I could. I had to take a few phone calls, so hopefully I'm not going to be repeating anything. But I want to thank the city manager for these initiatives. But I do have some questions related to the Rite Care Program. And I'm supportive of trying to expand it. But could, do you have, and I guess this would be for Mr. Fortune or Chief Hall. What, what portion, I mean, have you worked on, if you're expanding, what you think that's going to cost?
Ma'am, we have, and I'm going back now to the presentation that we made to the city. To the Public Safety Committee previously. It was additionally, it's approximately 2.27 million new costs projected at the time. And we do think there are some opportunities for some grant funds to be able to fund a portion of this. One of the things that we've been working on and Kevin Oden. Who you all know is working with Office of Homeless Solutions was the lead staff member in helping develop the expansion plan. And working to help expand it. Obviously, Kevin has been pretty involved with his new roles and new duties here recently. However, he did create a very nice robust plan for us, and I think it's a good starting point. The task four will be to see what opportunities we can. Utilize from existing grant resources and then as courses we go through the budgeting. Cycle to be able to determine if there's any additional needs, we would have to recommend those to the city council at that time.
Okay, so obviously you're going to be bringing that forward in the upcoming budget. And and potentially some added resources. That would be, that would be great. Well, one I would like to advocate for, that we continue to address domestic violence. As we've seen that that has gone up, I don't want that to get ignored in in these discussions. There might be, you know, we've embedded in the past a social worker to help with. With the calls, I mean, it, there, we know they can escalate and they can be very dangerous. For both the, for both police as well as the victim and and the. So I want to make sure, but I mean, if there's different ways to help. And and I, and our task force is going to look at it as well. If there's different options to be able to address those calls with more resources. Like social workers, I'd be, you know, supportive of that. You know, we have a lot of victims that are sometimes afraid to call because they're afraid, you know, police will come. They could be arrested or the offender could be arrested. Who's the provider? So, you know, this is an area, I think, when you talk about reimagining. But there's also an element of danger and obviously, you know, police have to be involved in those calls. But I just don't want that to get lost in the discussion when we're talking about. You know. Divesting public safety, it it needs to make sure that. You know, what I'm hearing is there's different ways we can, we can respond. And I'm supportive of that. My concern is going to be financial. Because, you know, we know we're going through a very difficult budget, but if we, ways we can incorporate addressing mental illness. And, you know, inequities in our city to be able to have a safer city. You know, there, I would be supportive of them, but we got to figure out how we're going to be able to address them in the budget. So thank you for looking for alternative ways of funding. And then I would also add, and I, and I think we're going to get more reports. I'm not going to, my colleagues have asked these questions related to the protest and arrest. I mean, I think we have made some arrests related to violent. Violence or people with felony backgrounds, and so I'd like to have a better understanding of that. I think there's been some talk about not having surveillance and I would be curious on how you. I'd be really concerned that if we're not looking in these groups for people that actually could cause. Danger to the, and be a threat to the other protesters, that that would be going down away, that we would, that these. What have been in the last few days, very diverse, peaceful protest. If we can't keep them safe, I think we're going to have. A lot of, a lot of problems. So. Understanding those that have tried to take advantage of the situation. And that you have made arrests with is something I would like to have a better understanding. And I think those are all my comments right now. Just been listening and appreciate thinking out of the box. And working on how we can be a safer city for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, committee or non-committee, questions on the briefing items?
Mendelson, I'm sorry, are you talking about the memos?
Yes.
Yes. So my first questions are about the radios. Is there someone who can answer? Okay.
Yes, we have, we have staff. I probably won't be able to answer, but I can direct this right staff depending on the question.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to say, as somebody who seems to always be focusing Dallas first. I want to say this is the first regional effort that I think actually treats Dallas fairly. So thank you for thinking in this creative way to save money and utilize assets so well with this proposal. Will the GMRS consortium, is that something we would be added to or we are just leasing this thing?
Will Sneed, who's with our Technology Services Department, is leading that project. I believe it's actually something we're helped, we're communicating with an existing entity that already exists or trying to schedule. But Will, can you address that, please?
Yes, sir. I can. This is Will Sneed, Assistant Director for Infrastructure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yes, John is right. They're an existing entity. They cover the cities of Garland, Mesquite, Rallett, and Saxon. They have their own radio towers. We're going to utilize their radio towers. In conjunction, we're going to, to connect with them. Or that will allow them to connect with our radio system so that they have better coverage. So that if, for example, they have tornadoes or anything like that. And they have fire entities or police entities coming back in from another area. They'll be able to interoperate a lot easier.
Great. So we're not joining the consortium. We're just using their equipment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
There's, great. And then on the map, you have, in District 12, you have the word Highland. Is that Highland Springs? Is that where you're going to put that tower?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm just looking. Yep, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I mean, I just think that's a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
I do have questions about the other, the other briefings. Do you want to, do you want me to continue or you want me to wait and see if there's any other radio on?
Sure, go ahead.
So. Sorry, let me pull up the next one. So the next one is on the dashboard. I do want to say thank you for putting the clearance rates on there. I don't think I got those for 2019. And so if I did, I apologize. It's lost, it's lost in my inbox, but I know I asked for them last month. Do you know if those were sent to me?
Yes, ma'am. We sent them, but we will resend it.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. We've all gotten about, you know, 5,000 emails in the past 24 hours. So. When we're talking about the performance metrics and the clearance rates for aggravated assault, it looks like there's sort of a 50/50 chance that it might get cleared. And robberies, probably not getting cleared. And I'm just wondering that, you know, when we look at the, the graph, it looks like in two years, we've never. We've never even hit the national average. And I'm wondering. Why you think that is?
So one of the, one of the things that we know is that we've been low in the investigator capacity, that our numbers are lower. We've seen an increase over past categories. But due to manpower shortages, our ability to ensure that we had an adequate number of investigators has challenged us.
I agree. And in fact, it looks like you added maybe 20 officers to that. Although we've added quite a few officers to the force. So can you talk a little bit about, I was alluding to this earlier, the, the chart that talks about. How long somebody who has been apprehended stays in jail?
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure. What's your question regarding that, ma'am?
Well, so 31% of the people are staying one to 10 days in jail. 5% of the people are there for 11 to 20. 2%, 21 to 31 day, 30 days, less than 1%, more than 30 days. And then there's 47% that are still in jail. I guess as of the report. So. If we, if we actually apprehend them, it looks like they're getting out very, very quickly. And I'm wondering if you could help explain why?
So, of course, Councilwoman, you know that our job is to lock them up, to make sure we identify those violent offenders and put them away. That's a question that you're going to have to ask the judge, the judicial system and not us. We are doing our job every day and I just want to continue to commend the men and women of the Dallas Police Department. They've been doing an excellent job through COVID, through protests, through everything. And making sure that we're arresting them. So it's just someone else's responsibility to make sure that they stay there.
So I guess what I'm saying is that if a third of the people are there for less than 10 days. We're, we're spending a lot of money to go arrest them. We're spending a lot of time on that. And I would like to look at what are those cases that we're wasting our time on? We're putting officers in harm's way to to do this work. If they're just going to get right back out, I'm just trying to understand what the point is.
So the point is, we have to keep our community safe. These are violent offenders. These are not, you know, traffic violations. These are, these are violent offenders who are committing robberies, aggravated assaults, some homicide. So it's not a waste of time for us. It's what we have to do in order to keep the community safe.
So if they are violent and we're doing this to keep them safe and then they're out in one to 10 days, have we done that?
The Dallas Police Department has done our part.
I agree with you. What are your suggestions on how we can change that?
I think that's a conversation, again, Councilwoman, for the individuals who are responsible for the justice system. And that's a conversation that, that has to be had on that side of the house.
Okay, so the other number is about the 31% increase in aggravated assault. Very concerned about that. That's on top of the 27%. Increase we had in 2019 citywide. The even 7% for business burglary, that's on top of the 19% increase we had in 2019 citywide. And.
Are you? So it's not on top of, it's not in 31% on top of the 27%?
Well, sure it is. It's 31% in 2020 and in 2019, we had a 27% increase. So it's 31% increase over the 2019 numbers. Those are the years you're comparing.
So.
Are you using a different year for a baseline?
No.
Okay. Well, that's on top of them. Okay. Thank you. That, those are my questions about that. For the Starlight Program, you've got the outcomes on the three locations that you've been presenting. And I'm glad to see that you've got three new locations. That's great. And I'm wondering, there's no data on those. Are they not up and running yet or what's happening with that?
Sorry, Councilwoman, you cut out. What, what'd you say?
For the Starlight Program, congratulations. I'm glad to see that you've added three new locations. But the data in this report is only on the three locations that were already existing. And I'm just wondering if they have launched or what the launch date is. Or when we would see data that would include all six locations then.
So we have six additional locations aside from the three. So those six locations are the ones that we're getting ready to launch. And so the three that you're seeing are still in the pilot process. Does that make sense?
The, the data that we have on the three is the same three that we've been seeing. You've got new locations coming on. When do you expect to be able to have data on those?
Oh, I'm sorry. When, when are we launching the data on the new one? We're looking to launch that by the end of August.
And then the numbers you have for narcotics, does that include marijuana? And what percent of those offenses are marijuana compared to other drugs?
So I don't have the breakdown. I have to team together. So we don't have the breakdown between the drugs, but narcotics, they're, they're inclusive of all drugs. We can get a little different breakdown between narcotics. Cocaine and all of the other methamphetamines and all of those. We can have those broken down, broken down.
Without using statistics, would you be able to characterize what percent or how big the portion of the narcotics offenses? Include marijuana?
So we clearly see, we, we clearly see the mark of the, the larger amounts of our narcotics arrests in enforcement around marijuana. That percentage I don't have, but clearly marijuana is the larger.
And then, let's see, for COVID. So for, for doors, you rolled out a program in, in one of the Southern Dallas stations. To do mandated reporting for essentially priority four calls. And I'm wondering, because we do have global pandemic going on, if you have considered. Because it's in your right to do, expanding that to all stations so that we are not putting our officers at risk for things that aren't crime solving solved anyhow.
We have extended doors. It is a citywide, much, much of a mandate right now. We've done that since March.
So it's an offering or it's required, like you're just not going to come out for certain things?
It's, it's required. Every, when we, unless it's an absolute necessity where we can't get the information. They can't do the online report and we cannot take it over the phone, and that's very rare. But if they cannot do the report over online, we have an expediter that takes that call over the phone. And that's what, that's what we're pushing the majority of our calls to right now. And can I say that there are not some that we respond to? It just depends on who's, who's calling, what their issues are and whether they're able to get us, us the information that they need. But for the most part, I would say we're well over 80% of our calls that are gone.
Excellent. Thank you. I do have one for the courts. We didn't forget you this time. And my questions for the courts on the dashboard is. Why we've had such a sharp increase in dismissals and also why the final disposition of the citations? Why that count is so much higher? If that's, if that's the same answer about the records and and just. If that's, if that's the same answer about the records and and just cleaning them out that are old, that's fine. Um, but I'm just trying to make sure that's what it is.
That is correct. It is the administrative review process. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are all my questions for the briefings. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from any on the committee or off the committee on the memos? Hearing none. It is three thirty-two, and at this time, we will adjourn the Public Safety Committee meeting.